But he might do it again next year.
All right, T minus one minute.
Okay.
You're first to Brian, after.
Oh, right.
After roll call.
Have any pictures of it?
Nope.
Oh, okay. She didn't have any pictures.
It was a schematic.
Yeah, there was one on the email.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I saw it on your desk. Picture printed out of it.
Did you put it on my desk?
You guys were talking about it at your desk.
Oh, it was on the screen. On the computer screen.
We are live, thank you.
Okay. All ready to go? This is July twenty twenty-three work session, the Marion City Council, the city of Frostburg. Roll call when you're ready, Ben.
I'll handle that.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Nina Forsythe.
Here.
Commissioner Kevin Grove.
Here.
Commissioner Adam Ritchie.
Here.
Mayor Robert Flanagan.
Here.
And Commissioner Carter notified staff that he would be out of town today. So for the first topic, we have Brian.
All right, uh, Borden Mining Company Land Lease, uh, this is for parking at, uh, Field Aid up there where Cougars play their games. Um, obviously, they had been using that area before, uh, they originally said that they got permission from Borden Mining. But I guess, I don't know when things changed, but now they don't have permission. So, uh, what we, uh, are doing is looking to sign a lease agreement with Borden Mining, uh, for a portion of that field, um, I think you saw in the picture up there. It's, uh, that's kind of turned sideways, um, so if you were to kind of flip that on its left side as the bottom.
That's back behind the field.
Right, it would be, uh, it would be that, uh, the left side of the field as you're facing the field from the, uh, from the parking lot. Um, so that portion, I think, uh, Borden is looking at five thousand dollars a year for five years with the option to renew, uh, for another five-year term.
Are they still doing the, the tree planting up there or what?
I don't know, they haven't said anything on that, I think, uh, from what Liz was telling me, if they leased this portion to us, they were just gonna let the rest of it grow wild.
Okay.
Um, that portion.
Will they fence off that portion so people don't?
We would be responsible for fencing it off, we were just looking at doing a split rail fence and then just cutting it periodically so they could do the parking lot over there. Uh, it would run along the property line, which is the, the long section, that, that long line on the bottom. That would be the property line between the, uh, the football field, parking lot, and the upper field. So, uh, they would enter the way they usually did over there, you know, as you come up to the field, uh, they would enter that section, take a left across the field, and the parking area would be over there. And we would be fencing off that section across and then up to, I guess, the property line there.
Why did they make, why didn't they just make it all on the right side and not? Wouldn't that make more sense to?
I think.
Section off the back section of it?
I think what Borden wanted to do was they wanted to block off access so people can't go up through their property anymore, which is, it kind of became a little bit of a throughway for people that wanted to go between the parking lot or the rec complex and up there toward Timber Ridge.
Gotcha, okay.
So I think they just wanted to block that off completely, and by putting the fence there, it does that. And then it sends them over into that area where it's pretty much all wooded.
Yeah.
So there's no real outlet there for traffic. So it prevents it from being a throughway for four-wheelers, four-wheel drive vehicles that have torn up the field on occasion, things like that.
Okay.
Any discussion as to them helping out with the?
They sent a check for, I think Liz said, five hundred and ten dollars from the Cougars to help with the lease. Now, how often we get anything from them, I don't know.
I don't want more money when our boys were playing in, in the account. Yeah, I would think that's, that's. We had like eighteen thousand dollars in the account, probably. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with doing this, but I would think we want, we need to buy it from them.
Okay.
I think at least half.
Yeah, I think half is good, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, they do a lot of fundraising and. Which is great, I mean, that's, that's fantastic, but I, I just feel as though we shouldn't have to. We, we know there's, there's some back history here, but we shouldn't have to be the ones that, that, the taxpayers should have to foot all this. Well, because it's not really benefiting anybody else but football, football team, you know, it's.
And it's not only Frostburg, you have a lot of teams coming from Laval, Cumberland.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
So, so we're paying, yeah.
On weekends, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Does, does that sound reasonable to you all?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine, thank you.
Oh, that's, that's.
Okay, thank you, all right.
So then Letty is gonna talk about some ARPA projects.
Okay.
Okay, we have three for you today. The first is the replacement of a few actuators over at the water treatment plant. Uh, it's not emergent, but there is a thirty-six week leak, thirty-six, thirty-six week lead time on them, so Hayden would rather get them ordered now and move forward with that. So we're looking to reduce the general water treatment plant amount allocated and use that, um, to cover. So it wouldn't be approving any additional funds for that. So that would be, it's, it's about thirty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-four. So that'll be a general resolution and a purchase resolution. Do you guys have any questions about that? Okay, the next is, we had put the summer two thousand twenty-three paving out to bid. We received two bids, the low bidder was AmeriSeal in the amount of three hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred. We had initially budgeted four hundred thousand of the ARPA, we have two hundred and seventeen remaining of that. So using the remaining ARPA that we have allocated and the hundred and thirty-five thousand from the general city revenue sources, that leaves us with a deficit of thirteen thousand to cover that contract. So we can either, and this is up for discussion for you guys, reduce, um, the paving work by thirteen thousand to stay within the budget, or we could just increase the ARPA allocation by thirteen thousand for that.
What do you want to add?
I'd rather increase it by thirteen.
Set it to thirty?
Thirty thousand dollars is not that much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, we got, I wanted to do, you know, one more big year of paving, you know, and then we'll kind of get back to our, our budget next year.
So if we increase the ARPA allocation, that means then thirteen thousand will be deducted from another ARPA project?
Of just the remaining balance that isn't currently allocated to any other projects.
Okay.
A hundred million of y'all, that's fine.
So then we will move forward with the award for that contract next Thursday.
There's another bid.
It was, um, Belkirk. And I don't have the exact, not really, do you? It was four thirty-four seven nine. And then lastly, we have the childcare center, we finally have that out to bid. Um, bids are due ten AM on July twenty-fifth. So we're looking to, um, streamline that award process by passing a resolution that generally awards the contract to the most, um, responsive bidder, if they're free of doing that. Okay, and that's all I have, thank you.
You win, okay.
Good. Now Bethany has several items for you.
Okay.
Brian, thank you.
The Bethany, she's about to begin.
Yes.
All right, so item three point four on your agenda is, um, the formal acceptance of the deed for the public infrastructure in the Sand Spring Phase Two subdivision. Um, the, this work was complete and accepted by Hayden in November of last year, twenty twenty-two. Um, and that work did come with a one-year warranty from the date of completion. So, um, we are still under warranty with that, if anything should, um, fail. So what we need from you all is to formally accept the public infrastructure, uh, or the deed for the public infrastructure, which includes water and sewer, the stormwater conveyance, and the streets. Um, and I do just want to note that the stormwater pond is owned and maintained by the H O A, so the city does not have any obligation as far as the stormwater pond goes.
Any hard burn?
And the pond, the stormwater pond is moreover towards well chill, yeah.
Yeah.
And I also would like to note that this deed was prepared by Michael Cohen.
Everybody got?
So next up, I've got, um, on the Frostburg Planning Commission, I did receive a letter of resignation from one commissioner. Um, it just so happened that a few days later, we received out of nowhere, um, some, some application materials from a very qualified candidate, um, Dr. Richard Russo. He was involved in the city's comprehensive, or the zoning ordinance rewrite in twenty fourteen, and he was also, um, an external reviewer for the city of Cumberland's comprehensive plan. Um, staff feels that as we are about to enter this next phase of comprehensive planning, that Dr. Russo would be an excellent asset to the planning commission, and we would ask that you appoint him to fill that vacant seat.
That's good.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
And then another appointment, um, Commissioner Rob Rephan. His term on the Historic District Commission has expired, and he has expressed interest in renewing for another three-year term. And, um, he's been a great asset to the commission, and we also would recommend reappointing him for another term.
Very good.
Okay.
Those will be resolutions next week at your meeting.
Okay.
So next on the agenda, um, is an agreement with Optimize Renewables. And Optimize Renewables has been working as a consultant with the city on the microgrid project related to the Resilient Maryland Grant Award. And as part of this continuing relationship, Optimize Renewables has prepared a confidentiality agreement to be signed between the parties. And this agreement is included in the work session documents that were online, and it has been reviewed by Michael Cohen. This agreement would prohibit the city from disclosing any information related to the proprietary business relationship, except as might be required by the Public Information Act. So unless you would have any questions or discussion regarding this matter, the agreement would be presented next week for your approval as a resolution. I think as long as Michael Cohen's okay with it, I am.
Okay.
For, for this section of the agreement.
Yeah, for this section, yes, right.
The non-disclosure confidentiality.
Kevin, okay?
Yep.
All right, that'll be on your agenda next week. And Chief Costello.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, good evening.
Good morning.
We have a, uh, request from Frostburg First addressed to the mayor and council, asking you to lift the open container ban on Main Street for the third annual lemonade stroll. And this will be on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, from ten AM to six PM, with the only condition being that all beverages are kept in plasticware, no glassware. So that's from Deidre, the executive director of Frostburg First. No concerns at all from the police department, I would respectfully recommend that you approve the request.
Lemonade for everyone, okay.
And then Bethany has a few more discussion items for you.
Sure.
Um, so item four point one, the Appalachian Forest National Heritage Area Grant. Um, this is a grant program that I became aware of at the end of last month, and, um, so the green team has developed the edible arboretum out at Glen Dunning Park, and we've been, there's no signage out there at all. So we were looking to have some signage developed, um, that would be plant markers, um, possibly a community-based public art sign that also gives instructions on how to use the arboretum, um, a banner to put on the fence. Um, so I, I was interested in this grant primarily for that signage, but then I got to talking with Brian, and, um, we thought, well, it might be kind of nice to update all the signage out at Glen Dunning. Um, I've received some comments in recent months that the signage that's out there right now is not super accessible for the visually impaired. Um, and if you, if you look around at it, some of it's a little older and worn.
I knew the, the fields out there too, the, the signage for the fields, like, they're, you know, numbered, and they're, it's just really small on there too.
Yeah, so wayfinding, so, um, I reached out to the A F N H A and asked them if, if this would be an eligible project, they said yes, definitely. Um, they did ask that we separate the budget out, um, to have the overall Glen Dunning signage in one budget and then the edible arboretum in another in case they're only able to partially fund the project. Um, but my deadline for that is July thirty-first of this, this month. So, um, I would, I'm requesting your blessing to proceed. You don't need a resolution for that. No. There, there was also discussion about having like uniformed signage at all the parks to kind of, you know, tie them all together, that they're all, you know, Frostburg-type park signage. Yeah, so, so that would be, um, the other parks would kind of be later down the line, but I think that getting Glen Dunning as the largest city park kind of to lead the way and really, I mean, I think that that probably is our most visited park, and, um, I think that if we can kind of get some brand recognition for city parks, then that would be, you know, that would easily translate across town, you know, as more grant funds become available and things like that.
Good project, very good project.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so may I?
Continue.
Go on down the list? Okay, so, um, as you're aware, we have, um, we have been awarded one hundred thousand dollars through the D H C D, um, Building Improvement Grant. That's what we're using their community legacy money for. Um, so we've got fifty thousand from fiscal year twenty-two and fifty thousand in fiscal year twenty-three. Um, you have already opted to fund two projects. Um, one of the applicants, they did the work without receiving M H T approval, so, um, they were disqualified from funding. Um, so at this time, in the twenty-two balance, I still have twenty-three thousand five hundred and seven dollars. Um, and we have not made a final determination on funding for the Aupetit. So I met with Larry, Elizabeth and I met with Larry earlier this week, and he has provided a rendering of what the facade brickwork will look like. And what I'm hoping from this evening's discussion is a blessing from you to go ahead and allocate the remainder of that twenty-two balance towards his project. Um, and I, here's the rendering up on the screen, I might have to zoom out just a little bit, just a second. I couldn't get it to zoom. Actually, let's just, there we go.
There, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, as you can see here, the front canopy will be coming off, and, um, the, the facade windows will be restored to the way it historically looked. Um, it will be much more historically accurate once it's all complete. Um, so if you would allow me to allocate the remaining balance, that twenty-three thousand five hundred and seven to this project, um, I am also interested in, um, so we have fifty thousand more from fiscal year twenty-three that has not been allocated at all.
In addition to?
In addition to.
In a different pot?
It's two separate grant years. Oh, yeah, so, um, Larry has requested additional funding from that pot of money, but, um, I was wondering if you all would be open to me opening applications one more time for one month. Um, after the applications closed the last time, I heard from three or four different businesses who were like, oh no, I missed the deadline. Oh my goodness. But, you know, I, we do have a sizable amount of money, and I, I would like to distribute it across the community as much as possible. So, um, I just, I, I need your blessing to go ahead and open that up for another one-month period, solicit additional applications, and, um.
I mean, you know who reached out to you, so if you want to reach back to them, go ahead.
Okay.
What, uh, timeline, end of August?
I was thinking the end of August was when I would continue accepting applications, and then, um, after that, it does not reopen again and.
Till the next calendar funding.
Right, and, um, so it, it really all just depends on how many applications we receive, but, um, you know, if we don't get a whole lot, then we can discuss Larry's larger projects at that time.
I think that's for a reason. Can he give you a timeline?
He's waiting on us to, um, issue our approvals. He's got, um, the architectural drawings are almost complete. The Fire Marshal's Office has reviewed all of his plans and gave the, the okay to proceed about two weeks ago. So, um, right now, you know, he can't start work without, um, without M H T's approval, but I can't proceed with M H T until you all give your blessing. Um, I also do have a, a quick three-minute video walkthrough that Larry made of what it looks like in there now. Um, I can pull it up on the screen, or, um, I can email it out later if you'd like to. Okay.
Go ahead and do that email too.
Okay, sure.
Then we'll all have it.
Okay.
You know, just give it a second, I'll get somebody else a question.
It's been quite a few months.
All right, here's a quick tour of the Aupetit building. All right, so this room here is, actually now it's going to be a new entrance here to the apartments. It's gonna be able to, you're gonna be able to get to, uh, all the floors from here. Uh, there's gonna be an entrance right here off the side, and this will still be a storefront from here. Um, so it's pretty much gutted now, those stairs will be gone. Uh, so it'll be a nice little storefront area. We'll do a quick run back here. Uh, this part's getting ripped off. This won't be here anymore. Um, it'll be more outdoor patio space. All right, let's do it, look around there, here. Okay. This will be the other main storefront, uh, it'll have blast windows like it originally did. Right here, this is where they used to store their food, and they had their exhaust vent and stuff. Um, so it'll be a nice big space as well. Uh, and that'll extend down into the basement, which we're heading to now. Okay, this right here was their dining area, which is now fully gone.
Sorry, this is all very dark.
So it's got some nice space, uh, there will be an entrance through here from the center part here, which we're actually gonna head out there now. This is the main foyer entry. Comes down here, this will be enclosed here and end right here, and this will all be open again. Let's go up that ladder, and we'll show them the apartment floors. Okay, this right here now is the entry to the apartments, which won't be here anymore, the stairway will be gone. Okay, up here is where they housed apartments originally, which now, on our floor plan, we have, I think, five? Four or five going in here.
Bigger than five.
Yeah.
This back half of the building, where the window was fell out, we're gonna reframe it with wood, and above that, we'll be able to put a rooftop deck for the apartments. This is the main apartment floor for the owner, which will get two good apartments out of here. We'll have a laundry room in here, and this will be cut out and made into a rooftop deck right here, that should overlook that area. And that's about it.
And I will email this out to you so you can see it and probably.
Watch her at the darkness of her own homes.
Yes. But I think that this video really demonstrates that even though it doesn't look like a lot of work is going on on the outside, but on the inside, there's been a lot done.
Yeah.
And he's to the point where, um, he's just kind of waiting on the word from us, um, before he proceeds with anything else.
What is the deadline for the funds to be spent in order for the city to get reimbursed?
For the twenty-two balance, that would be, um, by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. And, I mean, he's, he's ready to go, so as soon as he can get his approvals, um, I'll be asking M H T to expedite their review, um, and.
Release the funds.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. There you go.
Okay. So my final discussion item, if there are no more questions on the D H C D grant. Um, Ashley Markman from County Tourism has approached us and asked whether we will be offering the Holly Jolly Hometown Holiday Decor Grant again. Um, this is the twentieth anniversary of Storybook Holiday, and there will probably be a, a larger increase in tourism to Frostburg, specifically for Storybook Holiday, since, um, we were featured on the Small Town Christmas Television Program last year, and, um, that, that show has been picked up by a major network, I understand, and so the Frostburg episodes will be re-airing throughout the holiday season. Um, so last year, we had requested five thousand dollars of hotel motel funding for that program, and, um, we were just wondering if you were willing to allocate that again for this year. Um, I'd like to note that in the grant application, if you all approve, I'd like to make a note that priority will be given to businesses that did not receive funds last year, um.
Did we end up going further, didn't we?
Yeah.
We went to eight and nine thousand.
There was an additional, was it, I think it was twenty-five hundred. Yes, so it was a total of seven thousand five hundred that was allocated.
Let's start with five again, that sound good, guys?
Yeah.
Start with five.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much.
Holly jolly.
Those were the only items of what we had on the planned agenda, but if anyone else has anything that we'd like to share?
Yeah, we'd like to, uh, share our body cam in-car camera, let everybody know what's going on with that, so I'll turn it over to Nick.
Thank you, Commissioner Grove, Mayor and Commissioners again, so this is very new, we actually just got this yesterday, and today we talked a little bit to the sheriff's office, but what I'm gonna ask you to do is to allow, to give me approval to sign the purchase agreement for our body cameras and in-car cameras and the whole package that goes with this. Just very briefly to refresh, you know, we're trying to get our body cameras off the ground as soon as possible. The state's attorney and folks have asked us to work together with the county so that we get the same system, you know, same software, all that stuff. So we've done that, the county grant writer was kind enough to write the grant for us for the state to get the funding. Now the grant has been approved, they have the funding, we have the, uh, purchase agreement. So I didn't want to sign it without your approval, but I also want to note that the grant funding will pay for this year. It's a five-year plan, and we have the document to distribute to you either electronically or today before the council meeting. But year one is sixty-one thousand eighty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents, that's paid for by the grant for this year. Future years are thirty thousand five hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. We would expect there to be grant funding to cover that each year, but we would have to, the grant funding would have to be there, we'd have to apply for it. If not, we would be on the hook for the thirty thousand each year. So I don't expect a problem, I know, uh, some of you folks talked to the delegation with this, when this was new, and we would anticipate grant funding, but there's no guarantee, so I didn't want to sign a document like this without your approval. So we are good for this year, and the next, uh, four years, we would be hoping and expecting to get grant funding, but no guarantee.
Most likely grant funding for a portion of it, or?
Uh, that's unknown, I think, I mean, it could, like, they, I, I understand.
Everybody's applying for it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I understood, I don't know how, you know, official this is, but I understood when the legislature mandated the body cameras by twenty twenty-five, the understanding was there would be grant funding to correspond with that, but will the numbers work out in the end? There's no guarantee of that, we could have to pay a portion each year. I know they kind of did that with the, the, um, body armor years ago when Commissioner Grove was here, and they pushed that twenty, thirty years ago, they made a lot of grant funding available annually, and they still do generally do that, so I would picture something similar to the, uh, to that with the body cameras, either full funding or at least partial funding each, each year. So.
Maintenance would be the, the yearly thing, you know, cost.
I think, yeah, I think so. Uh, Sergeant Malaney, you might remember, is our project manager, I can certainly have him here, uh, next week for, uh, more detailed questions if you like, or I can find out anything, but, yeah, basically, we've got the full package. Uh, we, Cumberland actually kind of did their own route for payment, but they're getting the same system. So we, Cumberland City and the sheriff's office will have the same system, and it's got all the bells and whistles. It's like the top-of-the-line plan, basically, good quality cameras, software, or, or. or or supposed to be like holster sensors and um in-car cameras and all sorts of stuff. So I think that's all, just the software, the maintenance. I believe they'll replace items for us if something breaks or doesn't work, so pretty much.
Well, and also, does the information has to be redacted off of each and every video.
Oh, yeah.
They do that, we don't have to worry about a cost with doing it, they're going through all the all the cameras and and redacting what needs redacted and.
It's like a host site does that?
Yes, that the people, this company would do that, if I'm correct, right?
I believe that is correct, they have all this software where they can do a lot of this stuff for us. And for the criminal prosecution, it's part of the reason the state's attorney wanted us to work with them and the sheriff's office is they saw, they got grant funding too, you may have seen, to hire more people so they can process all these videos. Cuz essentially, every video we have from every officer of anything that's criminally charged, the state's attorney's office will have to get. And with the system, they should just be able to log in and get it, it's not like ten years ago. Yeah, not like ten years ago, you would have to burn CDs and run them down to Cumberland and back all the time, I mean, they can get right on there, they're hiring additional staff to do that. And preliminarily, when we met with the grant writer, the state's attorney, Elizabeth and I and Sergeant Malini, when we all met, they talked about doing some of our Public Information Act redaction too. So I think that's all gonna be taken care of by them, so hopefully that'll come to fruition.
Does their stated quote cover all like computer-related issues? Or does this tie into our current agreement that we have for other computer needs and backup with allocating computers?
Uh it could be a loose relationship, they're supposed to be including computers, all the software, technical support, installation, training and all this stuff. I mean, I guess if there was something on our end.
All the backup.
Hmm, sorry.
All the backup, like the computer.
That's all, well, one of the things we wanted it all to be done by this company and offsite cuz we don't want technical difficulties and losing video or something like that. So these companies now, they're all supposed to upload through the cloud, like they'll install the stuff in our cars and when the officer gets in the car, it'll automatically upload the video into this cloud-based system through this company so we don't have issues with hardware failures and that. Um so they should basically cover everything.
I don't think it's ideal, like, we aren't, we aren't to touch it.
Yeah, that's the plan, that's what we wanna be.
You can't use it for court, if we had any hatchet hands off.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, really, ten years ago, yeah, you probably would have have your own server and, you know, uh hard drives and that sort of thing. But these companies, as this developed, they've really jumped on this and basically said, we'll take care of it all, just give us the money. So that's pretty much how it's going, and that's, and definitely with, you know, I I didn't really want officers to have to dock their cameras every day to have it upload because if somebody forgets or something happens, that's a nuisance. We're told when they get in the car, it automatically uploads through the cell signal and all that stuff. So the more user error you can avoid, the better, especially if something happens and we need the video. So I can certainly get answers on any really specific technical questions, we should probably get Sergeant Malini involved in those. But from a layperson's perspective, I'm not a huge, huge tech person, kind of an end user, but we're told that it's gonna basically do it all for us and we just have to pay the money. Which, again, we expect to be covered by grant funds.
So you would be looking for a resolution next week of giving you permission to sign the agreement?
To sign the agreement, yeah.
Yes, yep, exactly, yeah. So they just, uh the sheriff's office lieutenant just called me yesterday with this paper. And there was a little confusion cuz they had used an older quote for a lower amount. So they thought we were gonna have to pay the difference, but between yesterday and today, the county is gonna get the grant modified, they have the money, so we will have to pay nothing this year, we will be good with this. But that's all, that's why we're just bringing this up now, cuz this really just got resolved today.
The hard burn. It is what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And probably a five-year contract because you're gonna replace hardware five years from now.
Yeah.
Would you forward me a copy of that?
Yep, absolutely.
Anybody else have anything? Keep this up whenever you want, meeting is adjourned.